Companies on board. Water Street. Was a price of sixty thousand dollars. That was for.
Post office to vote landing?
Yes. Outside of the catch basins and. The manholes. I, my recommendation is that we do that and get water, Water Street taken care of.
I agree.
Can I ask you one question? Now, I know the water company's looking for money to replace. The water lines in town. I guess. What happens if they get the money, are they gonna dig up what we just paid?
Yes.
Does anybody know what their plans are? You know, where they're at or?
No.
Cause I'd hate to pay it in a month later, have them come in.
Oh, I, I mean, if it, I mean, there's something that we definitely need to find out and but Michael hasn't told me anything on that. I know he's doing his shut offs and he's even putting future stop. Shut offs in down there right now because of this, so I don't know if this is, if. Their updates is anything that's gonna be within the next five years and on, so.
See, that's what I'm wondering.
But I mean, I can ask the question, so.
But I, I'm with you on Water Street, definitely, I just.
Um.
Doesn't they say?
Lower Water Street. Was on the list too. It's thirteen hundred and thirty feet, so it actually starts. At the intersection of.
Post office.
Lower, not that, well, that would be Lower Pleasant.
Lower.
So when you go around the corner right there where the house is right there, that's where it would start thirteen hundred and thirty feet. Round the corner down by. Stockbridge Park and. Very long.
What's that price?
Fifty thousand. When we get down there to the point. If you wanna talk about lower water for a minute. While we was down there earl, even earlier reclaiming sidewalk. We, uh. The one that was really bad across from Stockbridge Park itself. I asked Jason to calculate. Putting concrete sidewalk in to blend back into the existing new one, the good one that's there from. Whatever the driveway is. From there back. And. To match it up. But anyway, um, it was like eight, it was like eight yards of concrete it was gonna take and like a hundred and forty dollars a yard. For concrete, but I, I mean, obviously that's not. For.
It's not laboring.
The, uh, the wire or rebar, whatever it is that we would put in there. Public Works could do the groundwork and Jason offered to come down and help with the, uh, the forms and the manpower of. Laying that sidewalk back up.
Right around two thousand dollars, I'll say, labor, you know, with the company to rebar and.
To put that in, I think it was like twelve hundred and fifty feet or something like that.
Like the whole sidewalk across from Stockbridge Park.
It's down the end where you put the stone, right?
No.
Oh, no, it's not.
It'd be on, it'd be on the post office end of Masi's driveway. And it would, and it would blend into, it would blend into those two sections that's already there.
That's a, that's a smart, smart solution.
So it's. It, but I, it, it's. It's not cheap, but it's not expensive either.
You're not gonna make everybody happy.
No, I'm not. So I mean, that only takes care of that one particular part.
Yeah.
And before we did any hot top in there, I would recommend that that, that part get done.
Now, we do have money in the sidewalk fund.
That's, that would be, yes, we do have a sidewalk fund. That's the money for matching funds though, for the next, for the next.
No, no, we have money in sidewalk, yeah.
We do?
Yep. Yep, somewhere, I don't know how much it was, but.
There is, but it's. I thought the sidewalk money was for matching funds for the grant.
No, no, we had a different.
They had a little bit less, but maybe it was using it for.
Yeah.
Matching grants.
Yeah, for a meaning for matching grants.
Right.
We need more than.
We need more than we think it's, we need like.
But I mean, there's no way we will do all of this this year, no way.
So what, what else is on your list?
Pleasant Street and Lower Pleasant. Again, it's, uh, looking at. The, uh, curb stops and. The manholes, there's no way it's near as many on Pleasant Street as there is on Water Street. But. The grass that's between the road and the sidewalk on Pleasant Street needs to be stripped.
On the memorial especially there.
Yes.
Yeah, those.
On the other end.
The hallway straight through and we need to admit so that Sean, and I had Sean come down, it's like. A little over half a car width. That we would actually be able to gain for roadside parking if we actually hot top the road into the sidewalk. And then we could eat, if we decided either for parking spaces, actual parking spaces there or whatever it is, but you would actually be able to have.
To put main and school?
Pleasant Street.
Pleasant Street, yeah, but between the.
Yes.
Yeah. Where there's a tar of the sidewalk and there's hardly even what, you can't even get by?
Yes.
Well, where is it gonna be extended? Not on the side of the sidewalk, on the side of the person's house?
No, no, it's on, only on the sidewalk side.
There, is there, is there room over there on the other side?
Yeah.
About, about that much, not, not a lot.
But down, but between School Street and Summer Street. I mean, the grass is that tall, but the intersection, the intersection down there too, what?
On the side of the houses?
No, on the sidewalk, between the road and the sidewalk.
Where is the sidewalk between school and?
On all, on all of Pleasant Street, between the road and the sidewalk.
Yeah.
And, and some residents cut it and some don't. And the town comes in and cuts it when they can, but sometimes it's.
So how much is that gonna be, those two?
Um, Pleasant Street is thirty-eight thousand and. Lower. He doesn't even have a price for Lower Pleasant. But Lower Pleasant runs from the pizza shop straight through to, uh, the sewer plant.
And that's a disaster.
Yes.
That is, that is, so that, that's about all your money there.
My problem with down there is there is so much problems with drainage.
Yep.
That it would take, the reason why I wanna talk about this now, because if you, you folks say that you wanna hot top that down there, we'll be the rest of the summer down there.
Yeah.
Taking care of the drainage problem.
And it's a heavily trafficked place, you know, cause the recycle's such a bad.
So I mean, I just, I just don't foresee how we can get all this done.
Yeah, yeah, I, oh, I agree with you.
But before, before we spend this type of money on hot top, these problems need to start being fixed before instead of after.
So how are you gonna fix the manhole on Water Street?
I'm gonna raise them.
So who's doing that again?
We would, if, if it gets to this point. I believe we ought to be, be able to, is the town.
Are they, are they hitting right now?
Some are, some are.
Now, we've.
But I know we've got a couple of bruises down there that, that gets hit with a snowplow every winter, so I mean, it's to the point that. Those, those really need to be addressed and we got right here on Pleasant Street, on the corner of Pleasant Street and Summer Street. There's a, an upside down catch basin there that drives the water across the road and down through the parking lot, the, where the ice cream shop is. So I mean.
Which, that's where the, it flipped over one year, didn't it?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah.
Yes.
Now, the manhole covers. We'd have to almost have a, a, a different accountant for that because that's kind of a sewer plant thing, right?
Right.
Now Bruce, is there anything in your budget for those?
No, a modest, a little bit.
I mean, these is, before we do, maybe we don't, maybe we don't date this, maybe we don't date this summer. Maybe it's to the point we do nothing but prep work and we're gonna have to put it off, I don't know.
We've, we've got enough rain problem to take care of both of them.
Sean has also recommended to do a bunch of shimmin' this fall and do our paving in the spring. So.
Well, can you drive over, what's the speedways for that, hot, hot top around it?
If we shimmed it, yes. So I mean, there's, there's, there's just ideas for you more or less to think about, I mean, you don't need to make any decisions tonight, but they, just. To give you an idea of where you wanna head before cold weather because. Typically where at the end of the list to get hot top and done and, and it's a, it's a rush to, uh, at the end of the season.
So.
Can I ask you a question while I have you? Um, are we able to prioritize that list as far as severity of damage that's there now? And then the other question I have is with all of the hiking parks that we now have, Boot Cove, I'm seeing massive, just. Areas of tar gone, like, like the size of a truck, gone. Um, North Lubec, same thing, Straight Bay, same thing, Coffin's Neck, same thing, Crow's Neck, same thing.
Yes.
And that's where all the parks are.
Yes.
Are those? As equally? An issue or less so? And this is more of a road agent question.
The, um, the Boot Cove project was nothing on the list for hot top in this year. So what we have to do because of plow damage from the winter, uh, further down the back road was, uh.
Down off that hill, is it off Camber to the right?
Yes. We, we, we have, we have, we have to repair that.
Yeah.
I wanted to, the, the culverts that we cut in and to get the water out of the road down there. I, I talked with Sean and he would, he's willing to, when he comes through, he'll, he'll patch them in for us. So I mean, he treats us pretty decent on, on those type of things, so. Uh, pumping station is bad.
Yeah, the rust.
Something's gotta be taken care of there before winter because.
Those all failed culverts or what is it?
It's just, there's so much water in the ditches that the roads.
Eroding underneath, yeah.
With all the water in the ditches, it can't go anywhere. We did, we did a big job out to, uh, on the Lions Road here a month or so ago. And, I mean, we had complaints because we were ditching it out and then thinking it was too deep and it was this and it was that. But that, all the rain we've had since we've come out of there and we've all, we've all gravel and built it up. We built there today and I was impressed, if we could keep the four wheels and spreading it up, it'd be just as good as it was the day we put it down.
That's a best, that's.
So I, I'm really happy with the Lions Road, even though we had to put a lot of work and resources in it. That's what the future is for our roads in this town is we've got to get the water away from it so it'll dry out.
So speaking.
I've been saying that for years.
Speaking of that, and I don't wanna interrupt and I don't know if it's anywhere in your watch list, but, um, I walk every morning.
I see.
And, and, um, the Dollar General, I've always had an issue with their runoff. Um, well, their runoff now is eating out South Street, you know, like the rains have washed out from their parking lot and now it's just coming. And so I don't know what we do about that, but being that that is the road our school's on and it right now is in good shape, but it's not crumbling off on the corner. But it's gonna be real soon and I just wonder, you know, I don't know whatever.
We can look at that, but I was under the impression also that when they put that in there and the timing of when they put it in, there was still groundwork that they wanted to do.
I have no idea, I just, I just notice what's happening now.
Because I know it was, it was talk about fences and, and some rip rap around the property there, so.
Well, so maybe, I don't know who talks to them about that.
Yeah.
Right, I don't know who talks to them about that, but, you know, my concern is that, you know, before the winter. It's gonna, by spring that road will be in really bad shape if something isn't done before the freeze, so, and it's, and every rain, it's, it's a bigger and bigger.
I agree.
Larger amount of stone and they should fix it.
Well, I would say to my dear Suzanne.
I don't know, you know, I have no idea what the agreement was when they built that building in regards to runoff and responsibility. Have we had any response at all to a, a third person to help you? I mean, here's two people, you, we can't put you, we won't loan you.
I don't believe, not yet, no.
Oh, really? So, um. God, I wish I were younger, Dickie, I'd be right out there helping.
Hey, I don't get, I don't get paid enough, you know, quick money.
So, um, another thing I would like to have considered and when Sean gets down again, I am gonna look at it also, is when we're speaking of, uh. Projects, we just did, we also did a pretty big project down at Jim's Head, down on the entrance to that. Keep getting wa, that was getting washed out.
Yeah.
Plowing isn't, was, has been an issue there.
Yeah.
So we just did an extensive culvert job, rip rap job and whatnot to try to keep it there. And I asked Sean to, uh, to give us a proposal or bid on. Hot, talking that in around from the main road in up to the other side of, uh, the old bar masts and hubs, just so that we can try to keep that and not have to do work there all the time, so.
You mean, including Georges and?
Yes.
Yep, yep.
Um, but you're a hundred percent right, I was in this great, Straight Bay this afternoon, uh, the traffic in there to, uh, to Butler's properties and whatnot. I think it's great for the town to have these, these people coming to these parks and whatnot, but. The traffic, the traffic that's going over them roads is, uh, is phenomenal. We scraped and plowed and done everything that we could, we can do to these roads and they're down to a base. It's either a base of clay versus wedge. So the only way to fix that is actually put something back and that's expensive.
The, the thing is, we haven't done anything drainage wise, ditched anything to these roads in thirty, forty years.
I, I have said for two years that I would love to see a counter in there to see how much traffic goes over that road a day, but I think it would.
Straight Bay?
I think it would flip your mind.
Coffin's Neck is another city.
Yes.
I mean, the same thing.
Yeah.
I mean, you just fixed all that, but that won't take long.
No, oh, no, no, I, it's just buying me time to get somewhere else right now. So.
Well, with less tax dollars.
Thanks for taking that job, Dickie, you know, it's.
Well. I just want, I actually like giving these reports because, you know, it's, uh, gives a chance to, uh, quiet down the Facebook warriors of us hiding in the garage with them, so.
Yeah, the reality, the roads, we put an extra hundred thousand in this year and everybody, we put twice, we do four times much and it would not be enough money.
Right.
You know, so.
And it's part of, you know, I think you guys are right in what, what we're doing and working together on this and the comprehensive plan and all, everything that we're doing. It's part of being proactive and headed it in the right direction.
At some point that we would need some kind of longitudinal study on the increase of traffic and where it came from and the impact on the cost of roads.
All our outlying roads, like Dan is saying, it's all bottle based to get.
Sure, and, and we're getting no tax dollars for. And we're not getting any tax dollars.
I mean, like I said, it, it may, it may put people in the hotels here or it may buy people buying some extra homes, restaurants, stores, whatever, but it does not compare to the damage that's being done.
Exactly, and I think Renee was very aware of that before she left, like.
I mean, my, my thought on the whole thing, just my personal thought is. We should prep ahead for next year.
Absolutely.
That would be my thought because for too long we've chased our tails.
The, the list is too long to get everything done that we need to do anyway, so I mean, we just gotta prioritize.
I think in, in respect to Dan, uh, bringing up prioritizing and you, you were talking about Boot Cove Road, but I, my feeling is on prioritizing is. You also have to look at the traffic and the use of the road, so you'll have to start with your town center because that's where.
Yep. A hundred percent, I just, you gotta strike a balance though at some point, yeah, cause there are people that live and drop and traverse that road that aren't just visitors, you know, so they're doing.
I, I totally agree.
I probably two ball joints on brand new truck. Some of the Lubec roads.
I own your road.
Yeah, my own road, I mean, it's that.
Oh, I've read, I've read there about the big trucks.
Well, I'm not gonna compete with you guys.
But I mean, it, it is.
So we have two hundred thousand dollars to spend and I think you're coming to us as road manager and you need permission from, is it the decision of, I believe, the select board and you?
Well, yeah, I mean, I would.
Prioritize what gets done, do we need to not take what we talk about?
I don't want, I don't want you coming back to me and saying, you put two hundred thousand dollars worth of hot top on the road and then we tore it up.
No, we can't, no, no, we can't do that, so you have any suggestions, Dan, as to what should be priori?
I think we lean on our, our road manager and having prioritized, and I, I agree with you that downtown, our, our, the face of our town needs to be presentable and up to spec, but at the same time. I think a, a, a comprehensive view of the entire town and utilization, maybe even a counter, might be something worth considering, but I don't know if we have that kinda time.
If I had to recommend hot top for this year, it would be Water Street, Pleasant Street.
Absolutely.
And, and repair either, either through, um, shimmin' and or spot hot top in the, the outside roads that need to be done to get us through this one. That would be my recommendation for.
So you, you would high, just focus on the two main roads?
In, in town.
Yeah, and then the other paint areas.
I've been putting the rest of the money on, on.
Paint areas, yeah.
Like.
We got a short piece on, uh, pumping station, we got a short piece on Doran Road, we got a couple of short pieces on Boot Cove Road that needs to be done.
That's a perfect solution.
And I mean, like you said.
Sounds like all the money spent.
Well, we won't, we won't put the manhole covers in there too, because it's not a freight, it's not fair to Bruce to take it out of his budget either.
I mean, isn't that part of paving, prepping the road should be part of paving?
Absolutely. Well, that's why we paid main street, nobody had a clear.
My recommendation on that would be for this year, but in the future, if that's how it's gonna have to be done, I think I have a pa, I think I have a plan to sort of plan on.
Bigger budget.
So many, so going so many a year.
I agree.
And, uh, preparing for this.
So would you be able to prepare Water Street and pave it before, uh, this fall, in what the fall?
So before the weekend?
I think, I think between the cooperation, between the three departments, we would be able to have that done.
Because that would be really nice and also that Pleasant Street, that one between.
And like I said, we don't, I mean, if we're gonna be down there doing catch basis, it's not to the point that we won't help the sewer department, put them, them in there.
Can identify the outlying problems and put the rest of the money there?
I mean, we're trying to start a catalog on where these culverts are that we're putting in, we put, we put thirteen or fourteen culverts in the last two months. So to the point, now we put these in, some homeowners have purchased them and, and we put them in, but we, we, we now are responsible for them. So if we put them in and we're cataloging where they are and how, when they was actually put in. We go back in five years because somebody, plowed somebody's driveway and cut the top off of them, even though we're responsible for it, you know, it's not to the point where we can't say, hey, something's gonna change here.
Isn't that an ordinance, isn't that a sole order, well, we can change that, can't we?
And I mean, I, if it was something, something similar to that, then I think that should be in there, that the town should not be responsible for that.
Maybe next town meeting, town meeting, we should re, revise the ordinance because I don't see why we should be responsible for some of our culverts for the next thirty years.
I mean, if it's my neglect, if it's my neglect and something that I did, then yes, we'd be responsible for it.
I, I know that's how it reads right now.
Yes.
The owner buys the first culprit and put it in and then from then on, there on in, we, we have to take care of it.
Because I do know of two or three in town here right now, if we get the opportunity, we need to replace them because that's what happened is. Snowplow, contractor's, uh, just cut off, trade off and stuff. But we're gonna be responsible to replace them.
Yeah, they're not.
No.
So, we have a sandbit, are we, thank you very much.
Thanks, that's great.
Thank you.
Thanks, no sandbit?
No, we're not.
We want to.
We gotta put it out there.
Putting it out there. Oh, you're just putting it out, okay. Yeah, that's right. Did it skip, did it skip anything? Trailer, oh, trailer remnants on pumping station road. Did you find what?
Gary called me, um, the third time.
I'll find that one.
To let me know that, um.
Got me notes on it.
Old School had left this trailer frame with some metal remnants on the property. Um, I called Old School twice, actually, third time was today, the first time I'd heard from him, I talked to him. Um, and he said that his junk man was supposed to get it, but apparently can't give it now, he's talked to Peter Yates about picking it up. And Peter is busy but is supposed to get to it. The trailer was removed July seventeenth, so from July seventeenth until now, our property is still on there. At, at our cost.
He called Peter two weeks ago.
And I talked to Peter too and messaging him, he said.
But that wasn't his junk man originally?
No. And Peter said he's gonna get to it sometime. We don't need it sometime, we need it all because it's costing.
It's Old School's responsibility because they told us they would have it all removed by July seventeenth.
What's it costing?
Well.
It's not costing us, I mean.
It can cost us two hundred dollars a month.
Yeah, yeah.
He illegally, he can legally bill the town as long as it sits there from the day we tax acquire it. So. Old School's costing us two hundred dollars a day. Trailer frame, metal.
Just a frame, just like a wall.
Oh, cause, cause though I read that, well, I guess the frame though is counted as part of it, because, you know, you can leave behind the contents of the garbage.
Yeah.
Yeah, and it wasn't, it wasn't the person Old School was using. So, so. So I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna put that on him.
No, it's not on Peter, it's on Old School.
No, I'm just saying, he's, he's.
Well, yeah, and he's. Hopefully they get it out of there soon and.
I spoke to him yesterday, today, Old School, and did tell him that he's costing us more money by sitting there every day.
So I, I think they'll send him the bill. Yeah.
Yes. It's a law that the owner can bill us and we can be liable, but we can, we, we can bill Old School.
Who was the owner?
The tenant, the, Gary, owner of the land.
Gary Morse. Gary Morse.
So. Well, he's probably the, uh, executive of the state, he's still.
He's the executive of the separate case.
Legal, legal control.
Oh, yeah. Anyway, we have to get it out of there anyway, hopefully before the next meeting.
So what's the action, so you follow up with them?
I'm gonna follow up with them, it needs to be gone because.
Is there any we can do to help?
I don't know if Jason can get old, old school and put up a little fire under it.
I, I spoke to him and.
You have, or do I?
That's how I know he's talked to Peter and.
Yeah, but who was his original person?
And he talked to Peter and.
For any case. Well, he's a, well. Well, you know, that's old school's problem, he made a commitment to doing something at certain time and.
So my suggestion would be next time you do a payment until everything is.
Yeah, that's a word of it or something, yeah. You've parted, start and balance due wouldn't work. It was on a bit, we're just putting it out there, putting it out, don't come back in. We're gonna probably, yeah, there may be a specification that Jason would like to do.
It's in our, it's in your packet.
It was in our packet, okay, and there it is.
The last page.
Oh, yeah.
How long is that open until?
Uh.
September thirteenth and we're gonna open them. And what does it say exactly? Uh, it says the town of Lubec is seeking bids for two thousand five hundred cubic yards of sand for winter road maintenance. Sand is to be screened three eighth inch and less, aggregate shall be clean sand of hard, durable, sharp rain particles free from vegetable or organic matter. Lumps or balls of clay or other dietary substances. The gradations shall meet the grading requirements as follows. Civ designation percentage weight passed in square mesh civ three eighth inch, one hundred percent. Bid price includes material transported, sealed bids clearly marked sand bid should be addressed with board of selecting down in Lubec Board of Schools, School of Lubec, being in four six five two. Bits must be received by four P M Wednesday, September thirteenth, twenty twenty-three and will be opened at the select board meeting on September thirteenth, twenty twenty-three. Work should be completed by October sixth, twenty twenty-three, the selectmen reserve the right to accept or reject any or all bids. Please include proof of workers comp or proof of an approved contractor predetermination application for your company and a certificate of motor vehicle insurance and. I just have to say that that screening of that inch is very important because we didn't have.
Ricker Tony Knoos.
We didn't have it screened one year, we lost five tires route the line. Five tires, not, not, it was, it was unincorporated territory, but.
When's the salt supposed to be here, Dickie?
Um.
Cause I know last year and previous years, that's held us up.
It has held us up and, uh, but I just picked, I just went by what, what Ricky's done in the past, so it's just, we just more or less fixed the dates so that they coordinated within the same timeline. Um, salt has been an issue and in the last couple of years, we didn't have as much of an issue as Esport did, but there was, uh, issue with quality. So I'm not sure who the vendor is that the municipalities are getting this year.
No one planned, I think we just got confirmation from the county, you know, one of them's salt?
I think that's the same one that we had last year then.
I think it is true.
So, um, uh, the other part of it is, and I, because I asked the question and I, and I know Ricky had done it in the past too, was pretty lenient on it. We got a bunch of rain or stuff like that that we didn't haul, haul wet sand into the salt shed to, to stockpile it, so. The October sixth thing is flexible if, if needed, but, uh, we'd like to get it in so we can get it in, dried up and shut up.
Yep. Suzanne, what was the amount last year that was spent on this?
On the?
Sand?
No.
I don't know what the price was, I did up it to twenty-five hundred instead of the twenty-two hundred because I do know by the looks of what we have remaining out there, it was less, less now than what it was last year before we started.
It was around twenty-eight, twenty-eightish.
It was twenty-two, it was twenty-two hundred yards of what we put up last year.
I can let you know after the meeting.
I was just curious, yeah, thank you.
So we have, uh, can we get an appointment now?
Oh.
Oh, goodie, yes, yeah. You have to sign a lot of the points.
It's number two.
So I have listed everyone that was on the committee before, so were these people, my question, all contacted or did we just assume that everybody that was on last year wants to be on this year?
They need to put up all the con, all the contact papers, uh. Yeah, appointment papers, so, uh.
Right, so do we just?
I don't know who contacted them.
So I guess we're, uh, by process of default, if they don't come and, and get torn in the, in the next ten days, then we zoom, they don't wanna be on it, is that how we manage that?
Sounds like, like a phone call, I think sometimes they need a phone call.
Yeah, they, I think probably people would need a phone call, so.
We usually just do it off the list, right? Just take one motion, read it off the list.
We usually just do it off the list, right? Just make one motion, read it off the list.
Well, we made one motion, but we do, we, whatever is here.
We do have to sign, yeah.
Oh, yeah. Get to sign them all. Ready your pen. So, for Board of Appeals, we have Peter Howell and Peter Boyce. For Shellfish Committee, we have.
Who would you do this?
No, you can just, not, we have, we haven't voted, you can't start signing.
Okay.
So, okay, Shellfish Committee, Michael Scovani, James Fitzgerald, John Nielsen, Danny Fitzsimmons, Tracy Sartell, Carol Dennison, thank you very much. Now, I love that committee, all good. For Wardens, uh, we're gonna hold off on that. Um, for the Deputy Shellfish Warden, we have Amanda Lyons. For Planning Board, we have Sharon Yates, we have Eugene Gaffey, and I believe we're gonna have Dan Wagner. Do you have any blank, blank things?
Good.
Maybe you can help me fill that out. Is Dan Wagner gonna be on the planning board? I don't know if he's alternate or whatever, but I know he's spoke.
I think there's an empty.
I think there's an empty.
Yeah, there's an empty seat. So, uh, okay, so that's Planning Board. So, for R L F, we have Mike Scovani, Kenneth Bradley, Peter Boyce, Cecil Moore's, is he still acting on that R L?
No.
Is he? Is he? He's been coming? I'm here, here, there, okay. And then we have empty, so that means, Dan, did you wanna be on the R L, R L F?
I think you can agree for it.
I do too.
Yeah.
It's the, you know, the loan revolving loan, revolving loan.
So, first.
Would you like to do that? I mean, okay, there, one flight, one to that. So, this is for Dan Daley for revolving loan and we're gonna need a.
All right.
So, anyway. Okay, so this is the person?
Yeah.
So, this is like anyway. And then what's this?
Position of, uh.
Point you as. Hereby appoint you as planning board member?
Yes, okay.
I could, I could. Position of R L F. Shellfish Warden, Division of.
Yep, yes.
Okay.
Okay.
Let me see the revolving loan, what it says there. All right, here's Dan from Planning Board, revolving loan, as revolving loan, committee. I just asked her, what's the second one for the same thing? Oh, same thing. Same thing, yeah. Revolving loan. And then the name up in the top one.
No.
I don't know how many, but anyway. All right, so there's the one for Dan for the planning board. Okay, there's Dan for the planning board. And this one is for Suzette Francis to be the administrator. Okay, so Harbor Board, we have Derek Lyons, James Fitzgerald, Rusty Jackson. We have, um, Mike Scovani for, uh, Harbor Board is offered to sit on the. And I don't know why we don't have. We should have more people for the Harbor Board. We don't have Ricky Wright, we don't have Ricky Wright on there, we don't have, uh, the coordinator. Okay, we'll do that next time. So, we have Kevin Brody for Police Enforcement Officer. Doran Perkins for Health Officer. Bruce Green for Licensed Plumbing Inspector. Ralph Dennison for Harbor Master, I can't make that, but I don't have to boost myself. Kevin Brody for Animal Control Officer. Jacqueline Robbins for Position of Assessor's Agent in the municipality of Lubeck. And Mike Scovani for the Harbor Board, Mike Scovani for Harbor Board. Oops, okay, now we got a lot of celebration from many people, but that's great. There was a time when we only had two people and nobody wanted to do anything, so this is great.
Carol, did you want Dan, 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 um?
Wagner.
No.
Daley.
Thank you.
R L F, we got it. She did, we did, we got it.
Oh, okay.
I wrote in. Um, okay, where were we? Lori Sullivan, Stephanie Sanders, Sharon McGonigal, Mary Ramstall, Anne Seavey, Danny Fitzsimmons, Mark Olson, Susan Olson, Vanita Lyons, Diane Balkum, Joe Balkum, Barbara Thompson and Wanda Matthews. Excellent, we need her to get more volunteers for us, that is outstanding. We'll be, we need stamps now, please.
I will make a motion, we sign all those papers.
Oh, I'll second it. All in favor? Let me get my wrist action going.
Can I have my secretary sign?
Why don't we, why don't you get it there, Dan, to start and.
You know, you can.
We'll put, we'll put these over here.
Okay.
There, put, go with that. That's, there only needs to be three signatures. You can't sign your own, so we have to try to read, although I've been known to do that at this stage. We're missing, we're missing some stuff here, but can we, can we have, do more next time?
Oh, yeah, but I'm gonna do them all in one time now.
Oh, oh, this isn't all of them?
No.
So, if there's three signatures, we don't need to sign anymore, just saying, we want to speed it up. So, everyone who's been appointed has to come up within ten days and swear in, get sworn in. You're not allowed to really vote in your committee until you do that?
No.
Did we have the number? She took that one back, yeah.
That's right here, yeah.
Yeah. Update you on the minutes of the meeting, Suzette.
Can't wait. That's just the clerk.
No?
The clerk. The clerk.
It goes to Pam.
You know, I, he, he, it's in the clerk's, you know that.
I got it. Well.
Yeah, I know, I know that she's talking to me about it.
Does it seem to be more appointments every year?
Hopefully more people get involved.
Right.
And you don't have the two or three that are getting burnt out.
That's right. Now, I don't know if we discussed this, but every committee has to have one select board member on it. And so, that's something we'll have to figure out.
Yeah.
I'm on Shellfish. I don't think we have any select board member on the Harbor Board.
No, thanks.
I'm sorry. I came on off the.
Dan, do you think you could go on the Harbor Board as well than, as the R L F?
I think it should be Jason.
Oh, I get very.
I mean.
I don't know.
Oh, that's a big, um, CEO. And what else? But that's not a town.
Not for you.
That's not town.
Neither are.
Yeah. Where R L F is town.
Yeah.
Well, I know that, um, I wanna, um, I'm gonna stop attending the comprehensive plan. We have comprehensive plan committee, we have.
Rachel's on that committee already.
Um, I, I.
You've got, actually, you've got two select board members.
On that one, sir, and I'm gonna try to keep better attendance at the county committees. I don't feel that I, I mean, I would, I'm probably likely to be in Harbor Board, but I, I'm so busy with Safe Harbor, there's a.
Someone does the Harbor Board.
Master. Once, I, I would like Dan to do it, if you're willing. And, and they just read when needed. They don't read like every single month. Sometimes it's up at the meet.
Here's from, uh.
Okay.
That works for me, as, as needed.
Yes, as needed. It's really more like the as needed thing.
PRM.
I mean, because comprehensive, I didn't see any appointments for comprehensive plan or, or development.
You want to get them all, you want to go all on one night long.
No, but I'm just saying, um, just feeling like to. But we should figure out what the board seems, and we should talk about the plan, but. We'll do that. Okay, hand me the two. Then we have two on that. Um. The other thing is, we are. No. Of those two.
Oh, they're all three.
Oh, great. All right, so I'll sign these, you can go.
I'll be.
Oh, so, um, we have one other, another business, we have to appoint someone to county.
Only three on here.
County Budget Committee, so, um, I'd like to make a motion to appoint Nancy Harrison as County Budget. Maybe ever for the next year until Suzette.
I'll second that.
Be when maybe wants to do it at some point. All in favor? Jason? Jess, would you like to go?
I can go, okay.
Neat. Also, we need to take some consideration if we, if there's going to be a Washington County Councilor, you know, whatever.
Government?
Or, yeah, or are we going totally with the Sunrise County?
They combined.
They are it.
Are they, that's.
They are it.
Their dude went from like.
I hope I didn't sign myself.
I will volunteer doing any of that because I did the Washington.
I know where. Yeah, here's the, um, assessor thing.
Oh, that's that one, that's the assessor.